Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the December 13th, 2022 Town of Lake Clark Shores Town Council Meeting. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Paul Schalhoo.
President.
Vice Mayor Robert Schalhoo.
Yeah.
President Pro Tem Gregory Freebold.
Yep.
Councilmember Bautine Rodriguez. Councilmember Robert Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mary. We could all stand for a moment of silence. In memory of Michael Peon, died at eighty-seven years young. He was our Assistant Chief's father-in-law. And Dora Frances Langley, seventy-nine years young, are Robert Pollan's grandmother. May their memories be eternal. Father Peter, would you be so kind as to lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we approach the celebration of nativity of thine only begotten son, our Lord Jesus Christ, who was born in a cave and lay in a manger, choosing to peer to us in meekness and humility, we pray that we too may approach thee in meekness and humility of heart. As thy word was made manifest to us all, may we too continually be examples of thy love. Thy Son was illumined by the star from the east, guiding the magi and shepherds to the place of thy birth to offer praise. Thou art the true light of the world for us all to see. May we begin to see the world in the light of the understanding that is given to us. Grant peace to our lives, health, and the furtherance of all that is good during this nativity season and the year to come. Amen. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Father.
Thank you.
That was beautiful. All right, take a motion.
So moved.
Is your second? All in favor? All right. Motion carries. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, second.
All in favor? Motion carries. All right, we are on Mr. Pinsky here. Not yet. Might be stuck in traffic.
Didn't this happen last year?
I think it did.
Yeah. I know, I talked to him today, so I know he knows it's tonight.
Yeah. He gave himself about an hour and twenty minutes to come up here in rush hour traffic from Miami. I don't think that's enough time. So why don't we go ahead and move on into the quasi-judicial proceedings, and then we'll come back after that to the legislative priorities presented by Mr. Richard Pinsky. Any objections? All right. So we're gonna do the quasi-judicial proceedings now. This is for eighty-sixty Westlake Drive variance request. Mr. Scheck, can you do the presentation, please?
Yes.
As far as the requests and the recommendation by the zoning board.
On November sixteenth of this year, the Zoning Board of Adjustments heard a case requesting a variance. The applicants, Joseph Cassandra and Joseph and Cassandra Shear. This is for a ten-foot setback in the side yard. And the variance request was to install and approve an already installed existing trellis that is located three and a half feet from the side property line. The Zoning Board of Adjustment, as required by Section one twenty-five dash sixty-nine of the Code of Ordinances, found that special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, that a literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning code would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties, that special conditions and circumstances do not result from the action of the applicant, and that granting the variance will not confer on the applicant any special privileges that are denied other lands. And so the zoning board granted a variance of six and a half feet for the trellis from the side property line. It was, it's my understanding that they also applied some conditions to that approval, but I don't see that in the order. My understanding is that the trellis could not be enclosed. Oh, yeah, here it is. Under the order. With the conditions that the trellis will never have a roof or sides. You have to make those similar findings of fact. You can't just simply approve the action of the zoning board. You can approve and accept their order if and when you find that the conditions and requirements of Chapter one twenty-five dash sixty-nine have been met, and the applicant should present testimony concerning that matter.
And thank you, Charlie, but if the request is to go forward, the town council can adopt the recommendations in totality from the zoning board?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Joseph and Cassandra Shear.
Yes, we will have this.
Can you all come up and present?
I don't see the applicants here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, that's unique. I don't think we ever had this before.
I will say, I think that we've gotten overly lax in the presentation. This is a public hearing. It is a quasi-judicial hearing. I don't know how, except for the fact that you can consider what the Zoning Board of Adjustment did. But for the fact that the zoning board has issued an order, you could not enter an order tonight because there's no testimony. You can accept the testimony of the or the written findings of fact and order of the zoning board and grant it. But in the future, my recommendation is if the applicant isn't here, it's denied.
Can we table it, Charlie?
You, yes, you may.
I would prefer to table it.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
It's impossible to defend the case if it's challenged in court because there's no testimony on the record.
Got it.
I would just rather table it. It'll give them an opportunity. Maybe they just didn't understand that there was a need to show up today. All right. Where'd Richard go? Oh, they, I don't know how I missed you. Welcome, Mr. Pinsky. Would you be so kind as to come on up and present on our legislative priorities and what we have to look forward to this coming legislative session?
Copy of House Bill thirty-seven. Richard Pinsky, Chairman, Commissioners, Council Members, Manager, and Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Pinsky, that little device right there is a remote control that will advance your presentation.
Right away. And where do I point it to make sure it works?
There you go.
Okay. So thank you for the opportunity, and I see you have a copy of House Bill thirty-seven, so we'll talk about that in a minute, although I don't think it's gonna be a big issue, but.
I believe you're holding it upside down. There you go.
Good, okay. So who are our state lawmakers? We've had a little bit of a change. Representative David Silvers is still our House member. He is a senior. This is gonna be his last two sessions. He should be able to be quite successful as he now holds a senior membership on committees and has a great deal of respect in the House. We have a new state senator with redistricting. Lori Berman is no longer our senator. It's now Bobby Powell. And this entirely, the town is entirely within Senator Powell's district now, so that is new. I've already talked to Senator Powell about the Town of Lake Clark Shores. He wants to come, present, speak to the council, and wants to spend time and understand a little bit more. I basically gave him an overview of what we've done in the past and what we may come up in the future. And I was in Tallahassee yesterday and spoke to him again about it in the hall. I apologize. I just came at seventy miles per hour, chief. I didn't go over the limit. But I did come in hot. So here's their Palm Beach County delegation. We did, we did pick up two new members. Representative Matt Willhite is no longer in the House. Representative Catherine Waldron now replaced Representative Willhite. And Representative Emily Slusberg is no longer a member, and we now have Republican Representative Peggy Gossett-Sibon. And so we actually have, the delegation is becoming not quite fifty-fifty, but definitely a little more red. Senator Tina Polsky is now the delegation chair and runs the Palm Beach County delegation. Coming dates to remember this week, special session, but they're also having committee meetings. Committee assignments are out. So chairs are getting training, new members are getting training. We have forty new legislators, thirty new Republicans, and ten new Democrats. There's an overwhelming majority in the Florida Legislature of Republican to Democrat. They have surpassed the two-thirds mark, so procedurally that further weakens and erodes the power of the Democrat Party. We're gonna have a busy couple of months coming up. They, this is a little more aggressive committee week schedule than usual. And March seventh, of course, the regular session convenes. Palm Beach County Day is March eighth, which always works right around the opening day, and in the League of Cities, which I know many of you usually will will travel to Tallahassee and attend as well, is April third through the sixth. The last day of session is May fifth. And we're doing the happy dance, is what that is. The, so what I want to talk about tonight, and I know you want to talk about as well, we're getting to the place where we have to decide on what we're going to be requesting, if anything. As you know, the last couple of years, we've had good success on projects, whether it's the funding for bridge repair. We've gotten some water grant money, legislative funding money. We got our local bill done as far as the annexation. So we want to keep it going. You know, let's not slow down. We have been playing in the Department of Environmental Protection sandbox for all intensive purposes. There is FDOT. There are other places to go. There's historical. So there are definitely other silo, other silos, but we've, in the town, we've basically been focused on environmental protection. And that includes the wastewater grant program, the, which is basically the septic, some stormwater, but mostly, mostly septic and water quality issues. The Resilient Florida Grant Program, which is the flooding and a lot of stormwater mitigation. And then the revolving loan program, which is the very low-interest loan for projects, mostly water projects and infrastructure projects. It's usually than, you know, one and one percent, one and one and a half percent, something like that, yeah, cheap. And, and then the FERDAP. And we've had success in, in the FERDAP. We had funding last year out of the FERDAP, which was fully funded. So now, we, so while those grant monies are going on, we now come to what the ask is. So we'll be asking Representative Silvers and Representative Powell. The forms are still the same when you submit a request for House and Senate. However, this time, this session, we are no longer going to be using actual bill numbers. As you recall in the past, you would complete the form, and then you were assigned a bill, a number, you do an attestation form, and then your bill would have to get heard in committee to be eligible for budget consideration. Fortunately, Speaker Renner is streamlining it, sort of going back to the way we were. There still will be a form. Good news, it's gonna be up to the pocket of the legislators. Bad news, it's gonna be up to the pocket of the legislators. So while we streamline the process, it does put it back behind closed doors somewhat. The, it can be any project category, so, you know, think outside the box. There is always a local investment match, somewhere around fifty percent, but that's, that's not a hard, fast rule either. And so the Senate is not quite the way the House does it, but the Senate, the House is gonna have their deadline of February thirteenth. So we, by the time you take your, get your forms filled out, get your sponsors, get your attestation forms filled out. It's the holidays. This is, this is a priority, and really what we're here for tonight is to see if we can at least get some direction to, to myself and to staff about what we're gonna do for legislative ask. Two items, just for discussion. Both center around Lake Clark. One is the invasive aquatic plant removal. This is an ongoing issue and gets directly at the water quality of the lake, as well as navigation and just overall health of the lake. And then, of course, conversion to central sewer system. You are well aware of this issue and what has been imposed upon the town as far as DEP thinks of us. What it comes down to is you do have some septic tanks that are deteriorating condition and are leaching into the lake. You can live with that. That's totally up to the town council. You can ignore what you're polluting into the lake, and that's totally a public policy decision. DEP would like, and at some point will become punitive, if you ignore the problem. So one suggestion is, let's start thinking about what we have to do to make a serious impact. I do represent other communities. I watch this issue in Tallahassee. For Miami-Dade County, I work on their water project issues, so I'm very familiar with the process. There's not a single community in the state of Florida that can afford to do this. The infrastructure is fifty years old or more, and, and no one has the money to do it. So the name of the game is how do you reduce the, the impact to the taxpayer in your community as much as possible? Ideally, we'd like to get one hundred percent federal and state funding, special grant funding, and then it'd be zero. That probably won't be a reality, but I do suggest we try to put some sort of an effort into getting as much money as possible. I think I've heard your town manager say more than once, it's always best to spend other people's money. So, and that would be the goal. But we do need to start thinking about doing something because I'm sure you don't want to carry the moniker of putting you-know-what into Lake Clark. With that, I don't think, oh, yeah, I want to talk about House Bill thirty-seven. And yes, if this passes, and it will pass, is my prognostication because it's House Bill thirty-seven, and it's filed by a chair. And so this is clearly an indication, when you, when you, when you look at the roadmap and read the tea leaves, this is, House leadership is moving this right away. So you will have to, what is it, Form, Forms, I should note, it's Form six.
Form six.
Yeah. So Form six is the more stringent. And for, well, Councilmember Gonzalez is not here, but for the rest of the millionaires on the council, you are gonna have to file Form six, but it's not that big of a deal, but that's basically what this bill is doing. And I'm, and it's clear that what they're, you wouldn't have to fill out Form one. They're just moving you to, to Form six. There is a little bit of a, you know, question mark, and again, your, your town manager pointed out that the title of town manager and chief administrator, chief administrative employee, they, they exclude one, and so technically, if your charter and carries the title of chief administrative, which I think yours does, there's a question whether it would, would apply or not, but I'm, it's that I'm sure is gonna come up at some point. This is the only bill affecting local government at the moment, and, but stand by. Out to rain now. Preemption's gonna be no surprise, another big push on several issues that are gonna come down this session. Happy to answer any questions now, and let's have a discussion and tell me, you know, where we're gonna, what are we gonna ask for?
Thank you very much, Richard. I definitely think the, the biggest ask that we need is, is money for the project, for the sewer conversion project. Now, we've been trying to get money for years, and we finally are at the stage where we are at permit, and now we need to find a way to fund it. And like you said, no municipality can just flat out afford it on their own, and we need to get every penny of the one point seven million and, and then some going forward for years to come in order to make this project happen. So that's certainly, I think, our biggest priority amongst those, including the aquatic vegetation removal. Gentlemen, any questions, thoughts?
I agree. We were just up for the legislative stuff for the League of Cities.
In Orlando.
Yeah, and we attended, you know, funding for, you know, grants, approaching other representatives and senators. So we know where our people stand, but actually trying to get in front of the other folks to help them see what we're trying to achieve and accomplish. Because you'll get all sorts of stuff that points you in four different directions. This study says this, this study says that. Where at the end of the day, my feeling is, is that the state of Florida says it is what's contributing mainly to all of this across the board, for the whole state of Florida, and I'm on that environmental committee, the Natural Resources Committee. Even though they've dropped, not that they've dropped it, they haven't been as aggressive in seeking, you know, legislation on it, just because it just keeps being swept on a carpet. How, you know, likely are they to help with more of the funding that they've already cut us like fourteen times? Fourteen appropriations, I think we've been either denied or vetoed.
I like to focus on the ones we got, but.
The good year last year.
I agree.
To specifically answer the question, actually Governor DeSantis, from what we understand, has, his moniker has been infrastructure, particularly on water. And, and there, they've been record, record number funding. That is going to be the focus, I believe, of the administration this session, and probably the next, is gonna be infrastructure. And, and we believe that is going to be water-centric, although roads are definitely gonna be part of that as well. But that is what everyone's expecting, is that the administration is gonna be proposing in the budget that becomes dead on arrival when it gets to the legislature, but is gonna be proposing a much larger investment in infrastructure. But, and to, to your point on the, on the, on the agency, the legislature, like the five-year work plan for transportation, they are, there's clearly a move to get water projects and other state funding into some sort of an agency filter. Because right now, for the last three or four years, or five years, it's been the Wild West. Who you knew, what, you know, it had nothing to do with prioritizing of who needed the money for water infrastructure. Whereas transportation, that's the way, you know, folks like Councilmember Schalhoo, that's been around forever, will remember the days when transportation was the same way. It was whoever had got the, knew who you got, got a road project. Then it eventually moved to a five-year work plan, and then if you notice, nobody's going to Tallahassee asking for road money. It's all goes to FDOT. Well, that's similar move for Department of Environmental Protection on water is slowly occurring as well. That's why you see an increase, under twenty million on the, on the wastewater grant program, a hundred million on the resiliency, twenty million Biscayne Bay. The DEP is trying to get the legislature to fund the block funding, and then they will go through the process of prioritizing handing out the money. So I think we'll see a decrease, and I think you'll see the governor putting more money into the agencies and these programs, and then, and then making application through the grant process.
Great.
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate all your hard work.
I shared with Mr. Pinsky an article that came out last month where DeSantis awarded twenty-two point seven million dollars to protect Biscayne Bay. And that's a big, that's a big ask, and it was, it was completed. And that included the septic to sewer conversion, and dollars came in from Miami-Dade and North Miami for the conversion. So if anybody wants to hear it, and it's right here that I shared with Mr. Pinsky, and he called me back, said yes. But remember, we're mostly blue in Palm Beach County.
Well, it's changing, but also that's an example of the twenty million dollars that legislature funded. Did they allow Miami-Dade County and Biscayne Bay Commission to divvy up that? No. DEP decided where that money was go and was able to prioritize it. And, and the Little River. It was a direct, you know, talk about poop into the water. I mean, they have all along Little River on the, on the north side, those are all septic tanks just leaching into the Little River. You know, fish kill in Biscayne Bay, and so that's why the, the DEP prioritized that funding.
Shifting gears a little bit, for those of you who will not be able to start over again, for those of you who want to know the difference between a a Form one and a Form six, financial disclosure, Form six basically says Visa, Mastercard, American Express, wanna know what you owe. You get into your, your money market accounts. I wanna know if it's AT&amp;T, IBM, how much, and what is it? And I serve on the municipal administration, and the, the, the war stories are unbelievable. Very well-qualified people come up and they come ask, they come to get the, the packet to run for office, and they say, by the way, you have to fill this out. And they said, nope, not doing. Why? You can just imagine, now, if I'm a financial advisor, you're gonna see all of my, all of my investments, and I want your money to invest, so now you're gonna see where I've invested mine. And I'm trying to sell you a product over here that's not part of this. It's, it's gonna become very, very problematic, and it's gonna turn away a lot of good people. Now, clarified, does this go down to advisory boards?
No, it does not.
That's, that's where it stopped. And Form one basically said, this is who I am, this is where I have it, but you don't know what the bottom line is. Now this says Visa, Mastercard, American Express. So. Thank you very much, Richard. You do, you do a great job.
And the forms are state ethics forms, yes.
Richard, it's always a pleasure to see you.
You don't mind if I stay and listen to you?
No, please do. I think Mr. Clark has some comments.
You're not getting away that easy. I believe that I read somewhere that Speaker Renner is going to allow seven bills this year instead of just six.
That is correct. The limit now is seven, does not include a local bill. Well, they don't do claims, well, it does not include a local bill or resiliency.
So does that open up the possibility, then, that we can go to some red friends of ours and ask them for money as opposed to going to the blue friends and asking them for money?
We, we have red friends, and, and they, and, and they, they will help. Senator Powell, we're fortunate. Our, our blue friends are in leadership positions and very well-respected. And by that, I mean, you know, they're not screaming on the floor, they're not, you know, they're, they're, they work across the aisle very well. And so a lot of deference is given. However, on, on local project funding, member funding requests, they want it to come from your Town of Lake Clark Shores. Who's your House member? David Silvers. And although, although Rick Roth has, Rick Roth has helped us, he, it would be inappropriate for him to file our funding request.
There was a comment made by Congresswoman Frankel a couple of months back that a couple of months back that the feds were looking at large projects that had multiple agencies and were more likely to fund those. Would it make any sense for us to reach out to our neighbors that are also doing septic to sewer projects and try and find a regional approach to money requests?
Very much so, very much so. The 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 projects that get the best attention, not always win, but get the get the best chance are the ones that impact the largest amount of people. Lake Clark is good because there's, you know, we interface with the with the chain of lakes. I mean, there there is everything coming down the C-51. I mean, we we already have, we're impacted by folks upstream, so we have a good argument in that regard. But if there can be a regional solution, that's that's even, that's even better. So that would impact, you know, central Palm Beach County, the county should be involved anyway with our issues because, you know, they share the waterway with us, and as well as, you know, the communities to to the south and to the west of us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again, Richard.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Richard.
All right, going to move on to unfinished business, because there's no additional public hearings, this is going to be the ongoing septic to sewer discussion. So we all heard a lot of talk about the project and in particular, funding, and recently we obtained, what you call it, authority, or we received the ability to get SRF State Revolving Fund money. What was it, 3.7 million, Dan?
For Mica West.
For the Mica West project, which would is is would be the first of the new set of phases, if you will, phase two. One of the things that a couple residents have reached out to me over the last couple of months was basically asking, is this a done deal? I'm hearing this is a done deal, sewers are coming to Lake Clark Shores. And the fact of the matter is, is it's not, because the process that we've been following is design it, permanent, fund it, build it, right? So we've designed it. We have Mica West permanent, we're soon to be completed on the remaining part of the permit. The SRF funding is funding, that's a loan, right? That's a, that's not, that's money to use for it, but that's not the funding that we're talking about up here when we're saying we need funding. We need millions in grant money, appropriations, you name it, that's the type of money that we need. That's the type of funding that we're talking about, right? The burden would be incredible if we didn't obtain any of it, right? And the more money we obtain, I'm not talking 500,000 or 200,000 or 600,000, we're talking millions. The last couple of times I've been to the League of City meetings, I've attended the grant workshops, and they put a panel together each time, and these municipal, the electeds or the managers go up and they're talking about how they got all these millions. You know, you're talking about the 20 million over here, whatever that number was, they got 8 million, 15 million, 10 million. So I went up to them, all the panelists afterwards, and I had a discussion each time, and I said, how are you doing? What on earth are you doing to get this windfall of money? And each of them had the pretty much a very similar story, which was they're a very rural area, their poverty line's 30, you know, 30%. Their annual home income is 30 grand, their median home price is 100 grand. We don't fit any of these demographics, but that doesn't mean we cannot and we will not get the funding. So it's a, it's a big priority, I think, of of our legislative lobbyists, as well as the town administration, to find additional ways to go and get this funding. So until we get the funding that we need, I don't see how we can go forward with it. Just because State Revolving Fund said, hey, here's 3.7 million, if you want to turn dirt, go ahead. Well, we are shovel ready, so that's great. That puts us in the best spot possible to make this happen. It puts us in the best spot possible to get the grant funding, for whatever reason we haven't obtained it yet. So, like I said, a couple residents reached out to me and they go, I'm hearing it's a done deal. It's not. The council hasn't even voted on it yet. It hasn't even been up for discussion, are we going to move forward with it? Hasn't even been an agenda item, right? So just wanted to set the record straight on that issue and get my colleagues' thoughts on it, but we need money, millions, in order to make this project happen, and that's other people's money, not just loans. Gentlemen, you have any thoughts on that?
I can't agree with you more. I mean, you said it all. We've been, we've been, how long we've been trying? 10 years? Better, just to try and get this established, it's been about that long, hasn't it?
Been a long.
Yeah.
We'd be criticized by not doing our due diligence.
That's true.
So that's a big project for our incoming town manager to take on and the and the remainder of the staff, and we know he's got success at getting some significant grants, and we're looking forward to seeing what new ideas he can bring in to make that happen. Given the status of where we are on the Mica West phase, which is, we're ready, we're permitted, we just need the funding. The next big ticket item is going to be, well, did we get funding or not? And as long as we don't have the funding, I don't see, again, how it's going to be something before this council for an agenda item to vote on and say, hey, we're going to take action, and we're going to vote this way or that way. We need a way, we need to get the town involved, the new manager, to get these funding requests in. So it it has been on the agenda for all year now. We can continue to leave it on there, but just so you know, the next big update needs to be, we just got some funding, other people's money, grant money funding. Other than that, this is not a done deal, it's far from it. We're continuing to do our due diligence, as we have been for now multiple years, right? Starting back prior to 2019, and then it ramped up after the impairment was declared on the lake. So we're trying to figure this out, we're doing what we need to do, we need to do more in getting more funding. So that is the overall status, Dan, did I miss anything?
Just to put some expectations around timing, we'll go to the legislature in March and April. They'll pass a budget at some point in time. When the governor signs the budget, then we'll know whether we have money or not. That is likely going to be very close to July 1st. So we're not talking about knowing something in the next month, this is, this is six months away.
And what about before, that that would be the same for the grants, because he's going to decide the budget that's going to fund the grants, right?
Correct.
Okay. So maybe we don't address it until then. We might as well have an update on the on the status of our of our process, right? But Vice Mayor?
No, I didn't want to interrupt you, I was just going to, I'll I'll let you finish.
I think we should, y'all, we're going to keep it on the agenda, I'm just saying, be aware, there's going to be a status of where we are in the grant funding phase versus, you know, what's the status of the project? It's really where's the status of the funding at this point, because that's the the priority. If you have questions, please, we'll address them at the end of, at the end. All right. Anything else, Mr. Clark?
No, sir.
Anything else from the council on this item? So, right on cue, yes, sir, if you want to come on up for audience comments, or we'll start with Ascar Kulkarni, Mr. Kulkarni. Didn't you turn in the placard?
You know, during, my name is Ashok Kulkarni, 8131 Westlake Drive. Actually, last time, during the last meeting, before that, I had given this memo to everybody, and therefore I was expecting answer from you, because it was addressed to you, but you happened to point finger to the town manager, and this arrangement cannot be changed. The answer was because of the technical things, it cannot be changed, something like that. Because I had to sit down for hour and a half because the answer is given at the last. By that time, almost everybody has left the town, and the answer was less than three minutes, okay? But all I'm just trying to say is that, that you recall that similar thing happened, the main gates for the town hall were closed because we had some computers and technical thing here. That should not be the way, and if this is the way it's going to be, are you suggesting this is going to remain permanent? Because this was done for the COVID thing, and this ought to come back to normal, this location ought to be there. Number two, it's very difficult when the attorney is answering, chief is sitting there, for you, it is easy to look, but when they answer, it's not easy for us to look there, quite honestly. Therefore, please consider this change positive, because America is most advanced country to make all the changes. For the COVID, you had changed something like that, that time it should have been mentioned to people who change it, that, okay, now everybody's sitting close together, now this shouldn't go back there, it's convenient to everybody, the audience, for you, and especially while talking, you must have noticed many people when they were speaking, they turn around, looking there and looking there, but if that is there, this won't happen. And three council member, you have been there for a lot of years. This thing never change, and especially now answering question you have put in the last thing, that never used to be there. No town does anything, if somebody is really asking question, you ought to answer at the same time, because I experienced after sit questioning or discussing this, I sat there for hour and a half, I did not get the answer, that's why I'm just repeating this again. This should not happen, so please reconsider this, I will appreciate it. So I want to thank you all, I wish you Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. Thank you.
Ken Bolker, 8260 Pine Tree Lane. Gentlemen, I would like to especially, town manager, thank you for the update that you gave us in the shorelines, and we were talking about the sewers, and from here it says a process begins in 2015. Now, my math is not great, but that's at least eight years that we've been talking about the sewers. And I want to say that those that are opposed to the sewers, I'm in favor of it, but those people that are against the sewers, when the ocean rises and the water seeps into Lake Clark Shores, and their septic tanks will no longer drain, and now we live in a cesspool. So I suggest to all these people that are against the sewers, that they get on board and see if we can't keep Lake Clark Shores sewage free. And I know that it's difficult, you cannot change stupidity. Thank you, gentlemen, have a good evening.
Marty Barker, 8260 Pine Tree Lane. I won't be as harsh as my husband. I want to thank our council for everything they've done so far with sewage, and thank Dan. It's, I I'm very much in favor of going from septic to sewer. I don't want to have to put another septic tank in my yard, I don't want to put another drain field there, I don't want more sewage going into the lake, seeping in. I want us to have a lake where we can actually waterski, jet ski, whatever, use the water for what it's intended. And I just want to thank you guys for everything, and you can put both of us, my husband and myself, in favor of going to septic.
Thank you.
You mean going to sewer.
Oh, yeah. Let's get that right. Going to, I know, you know, they both start with S. And there's a few other things that start with S, we won't say that, though.
Anyone else that'd like to come up who's here in the audience for audience comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Jeff Shayen, 8121 Pine Tree. First of all, I want to compliment everybody here regarding the tree lighting ceremony last weekend, that was pretty awesome, and so is the Gulf Coast Parade. You were talking about the getting the funding before starting, is there a percentage target that we're going for? You know, like, is it 100%? Is it less than 100% before we start digging the dirt? So that was one question. Another question, this, this is not going to be appealing to anybody in here, but if there's technology that Florida Department of Environmental Services or somebody has permitted and approved that converts sewage water into potable water, allowing that to be a water resource to sell to whoever we get our water from, would that be something that could be used to pay off loans that we would get or reduce the homeowners that contribute?
Are you talking about reclaiming water?
No, it's.
No, he's talking about cleaning the water and selling it.
Yeah, there there's, there's brand new technology that does allow that, or I forgot what city in the state of Florida is the first one that has now has that permit, and they're coming up to constructing the plant, and then it's going to be rolled out nationwide. So, looking into the future, would it be a possibility where we could then sell or potentially reuse our own water and reduce the water costs? That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a, that's a Dan question, Dan question
We already move a lot of water, so tell us what you think, Eric.
Yes, well, I I would very much appreciate if this gentleman has information that he share it with me, because beyond reuse, I'm not sure what he's talking about. I don't know of anything that is localized, because the cost is expensive to distribute. That's why reclaimed is generally a large treatment plant with a lot of capabilities, because the the technology is expensive. But if he would like to share with me the information he has, we'll look into it.
It's all, you get back after the meeting. Right. That's what I thought. Miss Bing, yes, come on up.
You have to start with the water plant, you'd have to change your infrastructure, because you don't have the capability of capturing it, you'd have to build a plant.
Okay, because we we just move water.
Yeah, but reuse, and then they sell it to golf courses, or you can set up a program in your community where the water they, that's used to water the lawns, or water reuse, you're capturing the storm water. The potable, I I have heard of stories, but I, like Dan, I've never heard of actually sewer water, even stormwater, and turning it into actual drinking. Technology probably exists, but I don't know where it would be in Florida, and I don't want to disagree, disagree that maybe it may exist, but I have not heard of it being implemented in Florida, but there are communities that do reuse, and there are communities that have, particularly those with golf courses and other other programs, but it starts with the water plant. You have to have some way of capturing the water, treating the water, and then sending it back out again, but you, you don't have any of the infrastructure in place other than rain barrels, perhaps. You would need something to capture the water.
Jeff, are you an engineer, sir?
Nope.
Okay, hey, that's, we all need to have an engineer, we know, those guys make the.
Thank you, Richard.
Drinking.
Drinkable.
Drinkable.
Drinking. Drinkable. Potent potables.
I, my concern has been about communication from the town council.
Mrs. Bing, name and address, please.
Louise Bing, seven four oh one Westlake Drive. Thank you. My concern has been about communication between you all, the town council, and the seven hundred of us. And when I go, we go around petitioning, I am surprised and disappointed at the number of people who still don't even know this is going on. And I'm so glad that we did this. This is the beginning. This is addressed. It's going to everybody that lives here. And if they didn't know about it, they've, excuse me, they've got this nice article with an introduction. And what I'm thinking is that you waited a long time before you did put anything in the mail for us to get all the information that you could and be sure that you were doing, giving us information that you could stand behind. And I'm thinking that we need more. And it would be wonderful if we could have actual letters or memos going out to all of the residents or at least all of the seven hundred. That would be giving them a little more information, the kind of information that just drives people like me and help us to understand what's coming. And what we talked about tonight is so wonderful because at least we're getting hope that you are trying the best you can. And Ms. Labella, to get us government, thank you, a government money if we can. And I think we can. Anyway, what I did is I have three little suggestions of things that you might want to tell our residents, particularly the seven hundred people, that are things that if we are, like Mr. Clark said, shovel ready, if we get to that point, that they know certain things. Number one, that they would get the breakdown of all the costs, even if we know they're going to be changed. Give them the best you can of the breakdown of different things and what they cost. If you could answer some questions that you know are going to be asked if you put yourself in our place. Like, what's going to happen to my sprinkler system? Can I use my own septic tank system? Do I have to use one you're using? And how long is our road going to be torn up? And most important, whatever you do, that you write to us, please, somebody sign it so that we know that it's got a date on it and a signature. And even if you put town council, that's, that's good. That's okay, because we know all of you. All right, that's one suggestion. The second suggestion.
Ms. Bing, your three minutes is up.
Oh, no, really? Can I go really, really quick?
I feel like she was talking about the water in the beginning.
Everybody should get a mask. And I'm a map showing where the seven hundred people are. And I went to a lot of trouble and I got a mask, a map made up that we could easily put in the letter or the memo in an envelope we send to people showing the addresses of all of the seven hundred people. And that would make them feel like they're part of a group and understand that this is not just me. This is this whole group of people. And lastly, if we do, the worst comes to worst, have to end up with most of this money coming out of our pockets. If we're paying all of this, please consider the fact that we would want to see something from the government as far as correspondence, so that we know why that you've tried. We can't get the money and we have to do it ourselves. And basically what I'm concerned about is just you, not you just telling us what you want us to know, but listening to us, the questions we need to know. Which I think that articles start, starts doing that here. And I'm just so glad we got that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bing. Those are some great suggestions. Anything else from the audience here today? While y'all are thinking about, here we go. Good evening.
How are you guys doing? Joe Shear, eighty-sixty Westlake, eighty forty-five Westlake and seventy-one hundred Westlake.
Oh, you were the quasi judicial proceeding?
Yes. I might be able to stand up after, but, so I just have some questions since currently I'm paying my, my utilities eighty-sixty to Palm Springs. And I'll be moving, you know, and then I also have seventy-one hundred, which we pay to the town of West Palm. So if we're going to be doing this, I live on the lake, I fish. I, I agree with the watershed. We need to do this at some point. It's inevitable that it's going to happen. I'm a realtor and we have storms, you know, the water is rising, the storms, we have king tides. We have things and, and this is inevitable. That's going to happen. My question is, is how is it going to affect, you know, is, I look at this as a community problem. We're, we're leaking into our lakes. Majority of our septic, majority of our pipes under our properties are all under a slab with copper or iron. And a lot of those have bellies and a handful of issues that are already leaking into our watershed without even us getting to our septic tanks. Currently at eighty-sixty, I'm about to have to replace my septic tank. And I pay my utilities to Palm, Palm Springs. My other septic tank's fine, but how is it going to affect me being on both ends? And that's just something I'm concerned about. You know, would it be better if we looked at this as a whole, as a community? Since I own several properties and I fall in both, you know, both, both categories? And this is inevitable? Is this something that we should look as not for just the seven hundred, but more as a community service? Where we're actually making our lakes clean and actually something where we want to go swimming and utilize our waterways? So I'm, I'm just curious how that's going to affect a, a person in my situation.
Sure. Be happy to address that here in a few minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Why, no, we're on audience call. Are you coming up?
West Cook, seventy-one oh five Pine Tree. Only point of order is Mr. Shear is here and the clock is ticking on his code violations. So could you, I'm not sure he understands.
Well, I saw, I was about to address with Charlie, but I was giving you the floor so you could do the audience comments.
Okay. And also, where do we stand on the trailer?
We'll provide an update on that in a minute.
Okay, thanks.
So Charlie, now that the petitioner is here, the applicant, can we have a motion to bring back the quasi judicial proceeding and hold the public hearing?
Yes. The motion would be to remove the item from the table and reconvene the public hearing.
Okay.
Some of, second.
On favor? Aye. All right. So just an update, Mr. Shear, do you need to go through it all over again, Charlie?
No, I do not, but I do need to swear him in.
Okay.
And anyone else who may be speaking in favor of or against the application? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God. Thank you.
It could be, so, please come up. Earlier, the town attorney, Mr. Scheck, gave an update on the application, the reason for the application, the zoning board's recommendation to the town to approve it with the condition that you don't enclose it, put a roof or walls around the trellis. And the only thing we were missing was your presentation and then any rebuttal.
And Mr. Shear, what you need to do is just briefly explain to them what is there that you're asking for the variance for. And also then explain why you believe it meets the conditions of the code for the granting, as you did in your application.
Okay. I, I was never informed by anyone in the town. I needed to bring a presentation tonight. I've been going through this process for over six months. I've spent over probably three thousand dollars and a lot of time, money and energy to comply with the town. I love the, I love the area, but I was unaware of that. Essentially, what I built is I built an orchid arbor on the south side of my property, which is enclosed. I built it with concrete footers. And essentially what this, this allows me to do is utilize the south side of my property where an AC unit is and nothing else, and kind of reutilize the space into an active space for my family for gardening and our passion for orchids and exotic plants. I built the orchid arbor within a tree as well. My gardener, my gardener, who was an arborist, advised me this was the best location on my property as I live on the lake with, with multiple large other trees, a large leechy tree, large avocado tree with a lot of, lot of exposure where eighty-sixty is, it cuts in right kind of through the canal on the second part of the lake. So I have a little cut. I got a lot of east wind and a lot of exposures. This is an orchid arbor. I love growing works and orchids and exotic plants that need filtered light, which is why I built it within an avocado tree on the side of my yard. And where I encroached is, I, I didn't build this as a structure. I built this for gardening. There's no running power, no water. I'm on great terms with my neighbors. I had them sign off on something stating they were fine with the situation as far as where my, my variance stands. So I'm only within, I think it's about three and a half feet from the south side of my property. I built this to code. I own the house across the street. I own lots of other properties. I'm a realtor. I'm not looking to have this fly off and fly into my neighbor's house or a, a property that, you know, I own as well. So I, I, I built it properly as far as doing Miami Dade County, Miami rated hurricane proof straps on the roof. There's no uplift. There's no ceiling on top. There's no power or water. And then I also built the shelves to be removable. So if there is a category five storm, I can move my plants inside. I can take my shelves off. And this structure is cemented into the ground with three foot concrete barriers around it, three foot concrete footers and hurricane straps with no uplift. I, I built this myself during the peak of the, the peak of windward was the most expensive, unfortunately. And I've, since then, complied with you guys over months and months. I've gotten a new survey. My neighbors are all in favor for it. And it's really allowed my family to be able to utilize a passion of gardening and a love we have for this and recreate a space that was dead space on our property. Without, see, I, I don't want a roof on it ever. If I saw a roof on it and it became a shed down the road, it'd drive me nuts. This is strictly for plants, gardening and my family's enjoyment. So I don't have a pre.
That's all you needed to do.
Yeah, all right.
You're fine. Thank you. Any rebuttal?
Code violation right now? There is? What's the, what's, when and what's the status or?
We need to.
He has not been sworn.
Yeah.
So that testimony is not acceptable unless you want me to swear him.
I didn't know there was a, nobody said. Go ahead.
Yeah, we're in public hearing.
Sorry.
There is a code, there was a code violation. So I went through the whole process with the town. They got the violation. I applied for a permit. Unfortunately, it wasn't within the setbacks. So after that, I applied for the variance. I got a new survey because it was just out. I spent money on the survey. You know, I've gone through the whole thing as far as bringing in other people within the town that live here who are lawyers and land developers for West Palm Beach helped me with this. Because at the end of the day, this is a trellis, not a structure. And I didn't really see what I was building as a violation where, you know, I'm storing, utilizing this as another workshop or anything, or making money, or building another structure where I wouldn't want. But it's, it's hidden behind a six foot fence. I have trees in front of that. I have a, you know, seven foot, you know, seven feet of wood coconut tree in front of that. I mean, it's, you can't even notice.
We have pictures.
Oh, you guys do have.
We had everything.
Oh, you said presentation. So you had my presentation.
Yeah, we have your application.
We've got everything.
We have your application.
I know that, that's why I was.
The zoning board's recommendations, we have all of them.
Yes, I've gone through the process and I, we want to comply. I love the town and I don't want to see it closed.
So is, any questions before we let him sit down? Thank you very much for your presentation. Anyone want to rebut the request or argue against the request or offer rebuttal testimony for consideration during this hearing? Anything online, Dan? Couldn't, could they even do it online? Because you got to be sworn in. I don't think so. All right. That concludes the public hearing and then we vote, right? All right, that concludes the public hearing. Any discussion on approving or disapproving this?
Some of.
I second that one.
All right. So you need to, I think you need to, he needs to say a little bit more formally than that.
You need to identify if you're accepting the findings of fact and recommendation of the ZBA. Because those finding of facts will then be in your order.
You would go to the, go to the public hearing.
Everybody should know that the, the zoning board has approved. Is that correct, Charlie?
They've recommended to you approval of the.
I think you can just read the order, the adoption of the order. Yes, Charlie? Or does he need to state the finding of facts and, and read?
You can, you can adopt their findings of fact and order.
I hear my move that we accept the findings of fact in ZBA case number twenty-two hyphen zero-two on Joseph and Cassandra Share. That was presented to them on November sixteenth, twenty-two at six thirty PM. The ZBA of Town and Lake Clark Shores heard the variance request from Joe and Sandra Share, eight zero six zero Westlake Drive and recommends the town council of the town of Lake Clark Shores approve the variance of six point five feet as requested by the applicant for an existing trellis that is located three point five feet from the sideline with the condition that the trellis will never have roof or sides.
Is there a second?
Anything else?
All right, motion has been seconded. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right. So going back to audience comments. Anything online, Dan?
No.
Okay, we're going to move on to status reports. We'll start with Chief Smith. Yes.
You all have a copy of the report. Last month, the police department responded to three hundred and sixteen calls for service. Free arrests were made, one warrant, county warrant, another fleeing and eluding the police and another subject arrested for trespassing narcotics. The police department did a total of a hundred and eighty-one traffic stops for the month. We wrote a hundred and seventy-two citations. Twenty of those were criminal. And we, eleven vehicle crashes, two hit and runs. The flock, LPR cameras ran approximately a hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-six tags through our seven camera system. One other thing, I, we had a meeting with the United States Attorney that was with the Police Chief Association dealing with organized crime and narcotics and working with them in the Palm Beach County area. The rest of that information is confidential. All the officers completed their CPR training last month for the year. And we had twenty code violations issued. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, chief. I just, I'm looking through some of the stuff here and your officers' work relating to noise ordinance complaints and contacting the party where the complaint was made, even though their, the decibel level might not have breached the ordinances. So thank you very much for continuing to work with your officers to assist our residents in addressing these noise complaints. Any questions for the chief?
Nope. Again, like to thank you, chief, for recognizing Officer Pulis for initiating a hundred and twenty traffic stops resulting in sixteen criminal citations and over one hundred moving citations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
He works day shift and he was assigned to Pine Tree, Westlake, where we've had some complaints and also the red light violations on four step.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, chief.
Chief Adams. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. Tracy Adams, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue District Chief. It's always a pleasure coming and quite an education from the politics. Thank you for the update of the gentleman left. And all the septic information. I actually learn a lot when I come here. I'm grateful. Busy month here. We ran about twenty four different calls in your area. Eighteen being medical, three being motor vehicle accidents, two being fire alarms and one being an assessed. We have run about one hundred and fifty thousand calls so far this year. Palm Beach County Fire Rescue has. We have a lot going on. We're hiring about twenty, pardon me, two hundred new recruits. We are doing some current promotions and adding some other command staff to the area as well. Some battalion chiefs. And some other district chiefs and we're increasing enhancing our training for all of our hazard mitigation. We have. A, we serve, we have forty nine different fire stations. We have a few more being built. In your particular area, two fire stations predominantly come in here, which is Station Thirty Nine from Palm Springs. And ninety three from Lake Worth, which is slightly southeast over coming in from the south, southeast section of your community. Busy, the fall's been very busy for us. We've had a lot of read for record, first responder appreciation. All the fall Halloween and and holiday parties. So I'd like to wish everyone a very. Safe and healthy holiday and and a blessed new year and thank you for having me.
Thank you very much, chief. Truly appreciate all that you and and your team does for our town. Any questions for the chief?
No.
Can move on to Mr. Scheck.
My report is included in your agenda packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Scheck? Great.
No, no, thanks.
No, thank you very much, Charlie.
Alright, moving on to Dan. Mr. Clark.
I'm happy to answer any questions. I do have one additional reminder. This Sunday, starting at five o'clock, we'll have our menorah lighting event at Memorial Park.
Very excited about that. That'll be our second annual, yes?
Second annual.
So yeah, if y'all can make it, that would be wonderful. Five o'clock this Saturday, Sunday evening.
Sunday.
Sunday.
Sunday. I'm very excited that. Joe's contract was approved tonight. I'm grateful that he's here and I'm grateful that I have six months left.
Hey, if we can get him replaced, his replacement on sooner, he can. He'll be here sooner and he'll be out earlier. Thank you, Joe. Just some things from your report. We had twenty five entries for the town's holiday parade. We had over four hundred people. Attend the tree lighting event, which was a wonderful event. It was even bigger than it was, I believe, the year before. At least it felt that way to me. And it was great that the event basically was right back to where it was pre COVID. So things are. Back in full force and effect here in the town. I think it's wonderful. A lot of that has to do with the hard work of Dan and the staff. Day in and day out to make these events happen. So thank you very much, Dan, and to the entire town staff. Any additional questions for Mr. Clark? Okay. Alright, we're going to be moving on now to council comments. In order of any interest of time and for those who came up and spoke, want to address some of these questions first. One of them, Dan, one of them was the amount of funding we need to go forward on the project. It's a great question. I haven't personally figured that out. I think. Once Joe gets involved and we have a better appreciation of the costs and we know when we get the funding in. That's when we can make that decision. I can tell you this from my personal perspective, it is millions. So one point seven million, that's half the cost of Micah West. That's huge. But the remainder of the project is going to be. Significantly more expensive than just this one section. So it's going to be millions of dollars, right? So if we get a grant for seven hundred grand, I think that's wonderful, but that's just not the level that I'm talking about or that I would like to see. Because that's not going to have a major impact on the burden of the residents. Paying for half of it, major impact on saving the residents a lot of money. Paying, you know, six hundred thousand dollars. It's a nice benefit, but that's not the type of. Savings, if you will, or protection I want to give the residents when it comes to. Trying to proceed with this project. So I don't have a particular number. I'm going to leave that up to the those who are well more experienced than me like Joe and whoever he brings in. But I had this discussion with him the other day. Millions is 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 what I'm, what I'm wanting for our town to ease the burden on the residents so that this project can become possible. And we can begin to clean up the lake. Anyone want to talk about that topic or add to it?
I just, I would like to completely agree with what you said. I mean.
Microphone, please.
Yeah, I just, I completely agree with you, Paul. I think you eloquently stated. What we really need to do here and this makes perfect sense. So now we're just dealing with money issues. I mean, I do not want to have. A project that we can't afford, period. And I don't want to have to bear the burden individually. Or the residents to bear the burden individually. I think we got to work our way through this and that's why I'm excited about Joe. So now, Joe, you're going to help us through this and help us get through a lot of the grant writing because you and I have had long discussions. About grant writing and how it can be done. And I'm looking forward to two thousand twenty three being a grant writing year.
Yeah, me too.
Thanks.
President Proton Freebolt.
I'm good at this time. Everybody has said, I agree.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Ditto.
Okay. You have to get with Dan, your technology and cleaning water, although I think Mr. Pinsky may have answered it. Any way we can save money or make money. I like the sound of both those two things a lot. So if you could maybe share some information with them, that would be great. Miss Bing, so I'm all about communication, right? I want everybody, you yourself have reached out to me, many residents have over the course of my time in the council. If you have any questions, communicate with me. The reason I think that. It hit the buzz is because we've been gathering information. Literally, it's been a multi-year process to do our due diligence. As it relates to this septic sewer conversion. And we are, we have made great strides from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen to the present. And I think that's going to start reflecting in the information we're going to be able to start rolling out. And I think communication is key. In early discussions, when it came to Micah West in particular. They were definitely going to be, as well as all the residents who are going to be impacted as the phases go on. All that information was going to start going out. We don't have that information yet because we're not proceeding with the project because we don't have the funding. So I certainly think that impact on driveway sprinklers. How long will the roads be torn up? These are all regular, normal questions that when the time comes, when it's more of a reality because we have the funding. And we're following the plan. I definitely want to see all of these questions, if you will, addressed. And whether it's a flyer, an additional buzz letter, emails, door hangers, whatever we need to do to most effectively communicate that. I certainly want to see that happen. We just to date haven't had that information. Yeah, I imagine they're going to be, if someone's, someone's going to be impacted. You got your sprinklers coming down near the, near that area. Anyone else want to add on that topic? Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Joe, you on board with communication? I know you are. Okay, Mr. Shear, great question. You're in a, you're in a predicament. But I think what was touched on earlier with Mr. Clark and Mr. Pinsky is. There have been conversations to take a regional approach to this. Get the county involved, get Palm Springs involved. And make it a regional effort versus just Lake Clark Shores on its own. Palm Springs is already starting the the process to see how they're going to do their conversion, how, when, cost, etc. They're getting, they're years behind where we started. So I don't. Maybe Mr. Clark has an answer for what life is going to be like for you being in two different service areas. But the fact that we have two different service areas is is a substantial issue for the town. Because we can't go and impact Palm Springs service areas because that's Palm Springs service area. So, Mr. Clark, can you add on to that?
Can I add just a couple of things? There's been a lot of misinformation about. Those residents served by Palm Springs. There's been a lot of misinformation about fourteen hundred homes in town, seven hundred of them. Are our responsibility that leaves seven hundred on the other side. What's going to happen to them? The reality is. That about four hundred and seventy five of those seven hundred already have sewer. Palm Springs has been actively working over the years. Wellesley was put in with a sewer system in place. The Estates has a sewer system in place. The area that we want to annex already has sewer in place. So there's only, based on a study done by Palm Springs, there's only about two hundred and fifty homes. That they are responsible for that are not yet sewered. So the issue on their side is smaller than our issue. But they are working to resolve that. I just think that they're two years, maybe three years behind where we are. They weren't as. I don't want to say aggressive. They weren't as aware of the challenges associated with those issues and they're trying to catch up now.
I would say diligent.
Good work. Thank you, counselor.
So.
So it just kind of concerns me. So we're speaking as a reach as Lake Clark Shores. I bought Lake Park Shores. It's in West Beach. I didn't buy in Palm Springs because that's in Palm Springs. The area we live in has, you know, home values are rising. It's a better area. So am I going to be affected and put on their program or Lake Park Shore? Am I going to be protected by you guys if they service me? I know I'm happy to pay for it, you know, on the other property. Am I dealing with Palm Springs or you guys at the end of the day? And I really think this should be something.
Utility service areas are defined way ahead of the utilities going in. And once they're put in, they're impossible to change. Or nearly impossible to change. So if you're in Palm Springs. Utility service area, you're always going to be in Palm Springs utility service area and you will. Be subject to their council decisions on how they want to address issues.
Even though it's outside.
Even though.
Come again?
See, I happened to attend a meeting at Palm Springs. Where one consultant make a presentation about septic sewer on number of their communities, including Lake Clark Shores. And I took his business card. And then I wrote him a letter that you discuss this project. Can you provide me some details about that? With when you are going to do it, how you are going to do it? I did not get that answer. Last week I sent him a reminder again. That all I'm asking is, it's a public information. You made a presentation there. I was there in the meeting. So he ought to explain exactly where it is going. So since you are discussing all that, all I'm just telling you. I'm still in the dark. I have not heard anything from them.
Okay. You want Palm Springs, I understand. I understand. Yeah, Palm Springs needs to communicate with their, with their service area is what you're asking for. Sure, we can reach out to Palm Springs and see if they have. If there's a way for them to communicate with our residents who are in their service area.
Just to add to that, I think that would comfort me. You know, I know you guys as a town are much more favorable. You guys all have skin in the game here. We're all locals. We love our community. So me kind of is having that that ghost of not really knowing, being in the jurisdiction out of it. You know, are they going to say it's more or less? How are they going to treat, you know, are they going to hire a contractor that you guys would like? Or advise for our town? So I'm just concerning maybe on how you guys could potentially mingle and work together as towns that coexist. For this, the septic, you know, idea. I feel a little bit out of the loop knowing now I have to go to another town council meeting where. It's really not even West Palm Beach, Palm Springs.
Thank you. Thank you both. So we can reach out to Palm Springs and see if they can get some communication out to to those residents who are, who they're servicing. Alright, and then lastly is the trailer update. So Wes, we had a really good. Workshop about three months ago, two months ago, I thought was very helpful. We're, when's the moratorium ending?
February.
February. So between now and February, the council and the town has to decide if they're. Ready to to make some moves on changes or not, no changes. Or hold another workshop. After that meeting and then speaking with Dan and Joe, I think we should have another workshop. To just further discuss it because it seems to me. That no matter what decision is made, it's going to be impacting a number of residents and it's going to be impacting those residents in a variety of ways. Right? There's almost no property or resident that seemingly is being impacted the same by these decisions and. I think another workshop to further discuss it. Have some visual aids, if you will, kind of take the information we learned from the first workshop. Digest it and come back and say, hey, look, here's what a lot of people said. Here's what a lot of people don't want. Here's what these people do want. You know, now that we have this framework and we have some images, maybe on what's going on in town, like. Certain predicaments that certain homes are in, whether it's a handful or twenty. I spoke with a resident at the tree lighting. And he wasn't able to attend the meeting. But he's very adamant on no screening behind the, behind the house. But he's also, he also doesn't sit on the corner lot. Right? So his situation is very different from the corner lot people, residents, I should say, and then. The corner lot residents that don't have a fence or a gate. So I think there just needs, my, my personal. Position would be having another workshop after the holidays to get a better idea so we can. As a community, get the most input we can to to make the most informed decision on what's in best interest of the residents. Any comments from the rest of the council on that topic?
I agree. Very well said.
Okay. Okay, so.
And as we draft the ordinance, any input that you have, I would welcome. Contact me individually because we can't violate the sunshine law. But give me your input as to what you think needs to be changed or what you think needs to stay the same.
Thank you, Charlie. Alright, we'll start with Councilman Rodriguez.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody. Great tree lighting. Eighty three golf carts. We're in the golf cart parade Saturday night. It was amazing. We ended up at Sushi Joe, had a good time there. The parade, all these events were just beautiful this year. I look forward to the menorah event Sunday night, too. That's. Local residents started that up and I'm really thankful for that. Just want to wish everybody, let's just, you know, be safe. Twenty twenty three is already here almost. It's hard to believe.
I know.
I don't know where twenty twenty two went, but.
It's almost in the books. Thank you. President Proton Freebolt.
You're going to talk about that, right?
Yes, I, I, you're, yeah, it's up here.
Louise, I understand and I appreciate your comments. And I just want to remind everybody that every one of the council members, even our current town manager, has to pay those expenses. Regardless of where we land. And we have worked very, very hard. Hours upon hours and hours and hours of traveling, looking for these dollars. And we continue to look. And Mr. Pinsky is a great leader for us, advises us, if you are not in that game. It's very difficult process to follow. And when we were just recently in Orlando and we attended these workshops for. You know, finding dollars and finding money and going out and seeing who you talk to, talk to people different. Very time consuming. It's hard to get in front of these senators and representatives when. very time consuming. It's hard to get in front of these senators and representatives when we basically have a day, maybe two during session. And some of their demonstrations they gave, they're walking in hallways, you're trying to catch them. Hey, I need 10 minutes of your life for 60 days. I need 10 minutes of your life. Most of them aren't willing. Some of them are, but the ones that we don't know typically are like, who, you know, who are you guys? Where are you from? Where is Lake Clark Shores? But we agree, Lake Clark Shores is great and we love it here. And we are going to do everything we can to bring this along. You're right, the property values are outstanding. It's fantastic. I'm, I don't plan on going anywhere ever. My wife may have different ideas, but I don't. Yes. I got, Realtor guys are all over the place. Yes, I understand. So Louise, we are working very hard. We will continue to communicate and get as much information. We're going to cover some of that other stuff here in a minute. And Merry Christmas, everyone. Happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, happy holidays, happy everything. Let's all stay positive. Let's focus on what we have to do at the end here. There's, the septic to sewers, just one tiny little thing, just one little thing. It's the most expensive thing we're dealing with, but there's all sorts of other things our community are facing from the state. How long we've been trying to get a bridge now, Mr. Clark?
Four years.
It's a long time for something that's needed, don't you agree?
We're close.
We're getting close because we do small steps and we don't quit. These guys up here, we don't quit. We keep working. I will give that to all of you gentlemen. So it's a pleasure to serve up here with everybody. Joe, congratulations. We look forward to the future here and pretty soon you're going to be getting work because I know he wants to be out of here before July 1st, so. Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much. Good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor.
You know, thank you very much for the, the update by everybody. Richard, I refer to Richard as my coach. Because when we go up to Tallahassee, he basically, or my handler, he says, okay, this is who you have to talk to, blah, 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 blah. And we just don't go up there willy nilly. We go up there and we have appointments and we have agendas. We have flyers that we present saying, look, this is what we want to talk about. So when we go to these meetings, they leave with something from Lake Clark Shores in their hand. And we established this years ago. And, you know, the, you think we've been doing the septic sewer, the issue from 2015. Y'all would fuss at us up one side, down the other and run us out of town on a rail if we did not do our due diligence to do the design, to do the permit, to do the funding, do the bidding and then building. We knew it was coming. We tried to stay ahead of the curve. And we're taking a lot of heat for it. But good God almighty, folks, we have a fiduciary responsibility to each and every one of our neighbors. And I'm not for putting a shovel in the ground unless we got the money and the bank to, to, to pay for it. You know, it's, it's, you know, we just have to work together. We just have to work together. The, um, I thought that the tree lighting was fantastic. It was, you're right, folks. It was, it's like the good old days are back again. And, you know, we're still standing. You know, Lake Clark Shores is still standing. I think it was, it might have been Elton John. But we've gone through a heck of a lot and we're still here, folks. People came up to me and said, tree lighting, the tree, not the tree, the Christmas decorations. They were voting was last night. And some people came up to me and said, we want to have a Halloween decoration contest. So I mentioned it to Dan and as true as Dan can be, he says, talk to your new town manager. So I'm talking to my new town manager. Please, Mr. Newtown Manager and Dan, please get us our room reservations for Palm Beach League, Palm Beach County Day and Legislative Action Days. I don't want to be, you know, two blocks away. I want to be where the action is, please. Thank you. And the staff, did we not have the best staff around? Look at all the hard work that they did at the tree lighting. And it was just, you know, you can't clap with only one hand, folks. And I know you've heard me say that before, but think about it, you really can't clap with only one hand. And it's, it's wonderful. So I thank you, everybody. Happy Hanukkah, happy, happy Merry Christmas. And just everybody be safe and just thank God for all of our blessings. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Mr. Cucardi, I don't, didn't mean to leave you off the list. I think I said this last meeting, I have no problem moving everybody back up here. I know Dan, because he's doing, he's running this. I don't know if Joe will be doing the same technical setup when he joins officially. But there's no issue bringing Mr. Shack back up here or the chief so that we can have a full diocese again. So maybe we can make that change come the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, there is an issue.
Oh, okay. What is that?
The mixer that we have was set up and not all of those mics are connected to it. And it's not just a simple thing of plugging in mics because the mixer has to be reprogrammed. It's a digital mixer. It's got certain, I'm going into way too much detail, but it has certain channels that control feedback and this room is the worst room in the world for feedback. So we can go back up there, but it's not going to be the next meeting. It may be February before we get back up there.
Sounds like it's a problem you can solve. I like it. Thank you. Okay. I want to just touch on, on something that is kind of heard a little bit this evening from, from a variety of individuals. There has been a lot of misinformation that has gone out and been disseminated some way, shape or form on a variety of topics. And a resident drew them to my attention as I believe she also communicated the rest of the council. And I, some of this was just bizarre to me. And I want to make sure that, you know, we can address some of them. And maybe we can do an updated interim buzz or something that's a little bit more frequent to address some of these things. But before I continue on to this misinformation, if you hear something that just sounds flat out crazy or, gosh, how is that possible? Please pick up the phone and call me, call Dan, call Joe, if you want to be bothered before he leaves his new, his current job. But call someone in the town and tell them what you heard because it's important. By way of example, the cameras that are on the entrance and exits to Lake Clark Shores. There was, they were said, the rumor was, cost a hundred grand, they don't work, the criminals know all about it. That's not true, right? So when I campaigned and I was, I lived in Michael, I still live in Michael West. But my first house was right there on Arabian Road West and everybody said, we need cameras here. Got on the council, we established a fund and that fund was meant to beautify the lake and put security cameras in. We put security cameras in, they were L3 cameras, they were up, running and working, license plate reader, et cetera. And then L3 went out of business. So the cameras didn't work. Got a flock system now. Flock system's been up, I don't know how long, but we weren't without cameras for long. And someone thought that the cameras put a feed to the police department and the police department doesn't monitor the feed. So criminals are getting away with whatever they want to get away with. It's not true. I mean, just think of the, does that even sound logical? No. The feeds go directly to the police officers in their car and they can access it on the website within, what was it, three seconds, chief?
Yeah, I get notified and, you know, all these thousands and thousands of tags we run, we get information on septic offenders and people that have restraining orders and stuff that the general public doesn't really need to know. But I mean, the, the system is working.
Right.
And we're notified, I get notified on my cell phone. And the officers have access where they can be notified. It's all done, it's all monitored by artificial intelligence computers.
Right. So, you know, that, when I read that, when I, I thought, well, that's, that's just unique and just not the case. We, not only were you a safe town, but I think these cameras certainly provide us with an extra layer of security. Another one, the town's grill is owned by myself and Mr. Vice Mayor over here. I don't need any more cookers. That's not, that's not true. The town owns it. And it's only used for town events when we cook for, you know, 1,800 plus residents every year for the town barbecue. And there's a couple of other events throughout the year that it's used for amongst other things as well, all by the town. One of the craziest ones was that Dan Clark embezzled $250,000 from the town. And the council said, thank you. I, I don't, like, you hear, when you hear these things, I don't know who would perpetuate this misinformation. But it happens. I don't know why or who's doing it, but it happens. He is not taking, he's not embezzling money. He isn't taking $250,000 at $20,000 a pop. Maybe they're referring to the Blue Way Trail Inc., which is a company that was created by actually Mr. Pinsky here and has multiple people that are a member of their board, including those from Lake Worth Beach and West Palm Beach. Because it's a joint effort of these communities to get together to make the Blue Way Trail and this boat lift possible. It was the way to keep this thing moving forward when it hit a bunch of red tape and it looked like it was done. The town has donated $30,000 to the Blue Way Trail, which successfully got a designation by the state recently as the Blue Way Trail, which is one more step that we need to getting the funding, finding a way to get the county to take over the project and get this boat lift in this portage area done. It's $30,000. Again, I don't know where, how anybody comes up with these things, but we're doing everything we can to better the town up here, right? We've listened to the residents over the years. We are putting the time and work in to make this town a better place year over year, right? I don't think anyone up on this diocese is sufficient with just being complacent and not growing and not improving, right? They certainly wouldn't want to serve this long, some of these gentlemen, if they just wanted to be complacent. So, you know, ultimately, please, 561-644-8845. If you hear any information, even if it sounds the craziest or somewhat plausible and you're going, well, that's not a town official, call a town official and double check the information. I'm the most successful person there is. You Google my name, you're going to find 10 different ways to get ahold of me, right? It's that easy. Like first result, boom, there I am. You can't, it's, it's so easy to get ahold of everybody up here. There's no reason to sit there and wonder, oh, my God, are you, can you believe that? Mr. Clark, what are you doing with all that money? You know? So just please keep that in mind. Okay. Would anybody like to add on, on that topic before we move on? No?
Yeah, I think you got it pretty good there.
Okay. So again, the menorah lighting, second annual, December 18th, I'm going to be there. It's going to be wonderful. Thank you to all the residents and the young singers of the Palm Beaches and all the staff and volunteers that came out for the tree lighting and the parade. It was wonderful. I'm telling you, it was so great to see all the residents packed up on our street, receiving all the candy. The residents that were participating in the parade, I think they may have had the most fun of everyone. The joy I saw on some of these kids' faces, throwing out candy to everybody and engaging in the holiday cheer was really special. So thank you all very much for coming out for that. Our next town meeting is going to be January 10th, so please mark your calendars. And let's see here. That's it. Y'all have a happy holiday season and Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year. Be safe out there. Remember, tell your loved ones you love them. If you haven't seen them in a while, talked in a while, or even it's been a week. You can be gone too soon sometimes. Keep that in mind. Be, be safe. Take care. I'll take a motion. All in favor?
Thank you, everybody, for coming.